Good evening Wareham and welcome to the Select Board meeting of July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. May I have a roll call please Ms. Wertz? You're muted too. You're doing exactly what I just did. Thank you.
Good evening. Present at the meeting today is Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Slaven, Mr. Bessie, Mr. Sullivan, myself Ms. Wertz, and not here is Mr.
Chadwick.
Jared Chadwick. I always want to say Derek Chadwick, Jared Chadwick. And our lawyer Rich.
Thank you. Uh, let's see.
And Rich is here. Mr. Bowen just got in.
Okay, Mr. Bowen is in, yes. So may I have the pledge of allegiance, Ron? Please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie. Next on the agenda is residents' comments, and I'm going to read into the record the same thing that I read last week. Residents' comments. Comments are allowed on non-agenda items, and they may, they must be limited to two minutes. And there will be no more than ten minutes per meeting dedicated to residents' comments. Based on past practice, the Select Board will not respond or comment. Further, I would point out that this is a meeting held in public. This is not a public meeting. Therefore, nothing on the agenda can be commented on by anyone other than the people who you see before you right now. Is there someone in the audience who would like to address this? Ms. Noah, would you let in Samsung? The Samsung person? Who has the hand up? Could you identify yourself for the record? Name and address, please. We can't hear you or see you.
Okay, here we go. My name is Claire Tenaglia. I'm representing my dad, Sarah Tenaglia. Sixty-plus-year seasonal resident, a taxpayer, and a non-voter, which seems to make a huge difference in this town. He's requesting to install a six-foot granite bench, self-funding from start to finish, exactly like the existing bench down in Swift Beach, which is twenty-five-plus years, right there, right beside that bench, right there. Same thing, six feet. This is all we call a people, uh, people, and we feel it's beneficial to all residents who have expressed their support to us, especially elderly and handicapped. This entrance is not handicapped accessible, and it is crumbling. He has offered to pay to fix that, too. My dad was sent from department head to department head, and no one was able to produce any type of policy, and some of his, the answers he received were pretty ludicrous. Well, the timing of this is very suspect to us. The memorial-
Ms. Tenaglia, you have thirty seconds.
All right, the memorial pickets with names are being placed around the John Joe Conway Playground, paid by CPA funds with a thousand, hundred thousand dollar upkeep. What upkeep is needed for a granite bench?
Thank you, Ms. Tenaglia. Your two minutes are up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this board? Ms. Zizik? Mr. Noah, would you let, Mr. Sullivan, Noah, would you let her in, please? Ms. Zizik, identify yourself for the record with your address, please.
My name is Missy Dizik. I'm one eighty-five onset Ave in Onset.
Thank you.
Um, I was just calling. I had submitted an application for reapportment to the Affordable Housing Trust, and I haven't heard anything. Um, Carl Schultz, our chair, submitted his at the same time, and he was appointed last month. So I stopped in the Selectman's office and left a couple of messages, but I just wanted to check in.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Dizik. That will be on a future agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good night. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this board? Raise your hand, please. Seeing none, I will go back to the agenda, please. Um, let's see, announcements. Mr. Slaven? Oh, and the record writer that Mr. Chadwick joined the meeting at seven oh three. Mr. Slaven?
Yep, just give me a minute.
Yep. Ms. Wertz, could you mute yourself? Again, we're having terrible back- backtalk on some of this.
Okay, first off, the Parkwood Association group basically was a hundred years old. Uh, this past Saturday, they had a parade. Uh, great turnout. Everybody had a really good time. Uh, the local car club that I'm involved with brought a bunch of antique cars there, and I have to really thank everybody for just the wonderful job done. Uh, next we have, I'll read this, Sharon Frank, who has been involved with the Council on Aging for quite a long time, received, uh, and basically what they call a lifetime achievement award from Old Colony Elder Services. Old Colony Elder Services, I believe, is in Brockton, and they service the Wareham area, providing different programs for the seniors. Uh, she got the award for basically having over four thousand hours of volunteering in her lifetime so far. Sharon, basically, when the Council on Aging was really shrunk to very little, stepped up and kept everything going for a long time, and we need to thank her very much for her service. Also, we have another organization called the Wareham Community Associates. Uh, they do have their annual lobster Vegas tomorrow. Uh, I believe there may be two tickets left. Uh, there's a person named Dennis who wanted three extras. We didn't have them at the time. If they want, they can check at the Zeko Marine Steel Building up on the second level there. Uh, come see me. If I have any tickets left, I'll be provided at that time. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, announcements, sir?
Um, just one quick reminder to the wonderful residents here in town. Um, obviously, the other night, we had another issue, uh, not with a kid on a bike, but a young adult and a kid on a dirt bike, um, that didn't have any lights on it. It was late at night, uh, no helmets. Um, please just continue to remind your children that helmets are very, very, very important. Um, you know, they're not the be-all, end-all to, you know, accidents, but it can definitely potentially save a life. So please, just remind your kids, uh, we still continue to see them in the neighborhoods, uh, riding without helmets. Um, you know, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's, it's very, very important that, you know, even adults, if you're on a bike, please put on a helmet. It's very, very important, and it could be the difference between, um, going home and not. So please, continue to remind your kids, wear helmets. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bessie. Yes, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, just to, uh, fit in with that as well, for Ron, Massachusetts requires anybody sixteen years or younger, they have to wear a bicycle helmet. You know, it's not an option. It's a requirement. And if anybody's looked at the newspaper in the last few days, there was a, an accident with two boy, actually, one young boy, one, one over twenty, who was on a basically a dirt bike, I'm not sure what type of dirt bike, down by the CBS, actually, Walgreens, Shaw's at that intersection. Um, no helmets, no lights, no registration, et cetera. Uh, they got hit by a car. I don't believe it was the car's fault, and both died. No helmets. You know, it's, you're foolish to be at anything with two wheels, and I've ridden for probably fifty years, so I can easily say that without a helmet. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Chadwick?
I'm actually just going to add on to that. Uh, I can tell you personally, med flight is not fun. It is not cheap. Uh, and brain damage it can cause. Not worth it. Just wear a helmet. It's easy, real easy. I'm pretty sure most of the helmet companies out there have grants to give them to you for free. So, check it out. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Wertz, announcements?
Sorry, I had to get unmuted. Um, there's lots of announcements, and I hope on a happier note. Um, the library, again, I encourage everyone to look at that, um, website at least the beginning of every week. Um, I wish I was a kid and was going to Patrick's Library at this point. So we have this week, we have, um, we had a detective and dog story so told for kids. We have a, um, hop off the library bubble show on Saturday where there is a Mr. Bubble. Guy comes in and from six-thirty to Thursday, it's actually on Tuesday, he designs and creates very special things out of big, huge bubbles, and the kids will love it. The library also has more music coming up on this weekend, I believe, if not next Monday. There's music also in Onset at the VFW at Gilts Park this Saturday, this twenty-second, from noon to six P M. It's ten dollars in advance and fifteen at the door. One of the performers, Gil Korea, is originally from Onset. And we have a butterfly work, walk at, um, on the twenty-second at Great Neck Sanctuary, and that's just some samplings of about twelve different things that are happening this week.
Also?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I would have mentioned most of those, but, uh, the one that I want to make sure that everybody understands is that on Monday, the twenty-fourth, at seven P M. at the elementary school on Minet Avenue, there is a special town meeting. There are five articles on the warrant. They deal with the sewer, um, plant itself, as well as a, uh, repairs in the Swift Beach area. So I urge everyone to be there. I also urge you to be there like at six-thirty, so that there's not a backlog, and because our moderator does start the meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you. There are several appointments. Most of them are reappointments, with the exception of the golf course committee. Mr. Tropiano has COVID again and is unable to be here this evening, but I think most of you know him. So, um, Ms. Wertz, I'll accept motions on the first one, okay? You're muted.
I make a motion that we appoint Troy Larson as an associate member to the zoning board of appeals for a term to expires on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint him to a, an associate position. All associate positions in this town are one-year appointments, and our appointments run from June thirtieth from July first to the June thirtieth. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Understand that none of these individuals can be, uh, sworn in by the town clerk until they have completed all of the required training, the ethics and the open meeting law, among other things. Next, Ms. Wertz?
Okay, the next is the recycling committee, and I'm going to try and do these as one. So make a motion that we appoint Earl J. Russell to a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, to the recycling committee, and included in that motion that we appoint Amanda Cobb for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And finally, Anne Marie Brooks for a term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
And in seconded, you will note that they have three expiration dates. Um, we will be discussing this committee later on in the meeting, but we are trying to keep the rotation and the number of people who would come on and off a committee, um, into regular steps. Is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint these three individuals? Again, they will not be sworn in until they have completed all of the paperwork. Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Next, please.
I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Patrick Tropiano to the Golf Course Advisory Committee for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. You'll note that there's a very short end date on this. The Golf Course Committee was appointed originally for a year. We extended that. Um, and I'm not sure whether the committee will choose to extend its life again. Um, it's meant to be an aid to Mr. Sullivan, who is the manager of the course. Um, as I said, Mr. Tropiano is ill. We do have a letter of recommendation from the Chair of the Golf Course Committee, and Mr. Tropiano has been attending the meetings. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is done. Next, please.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint Joseph Cardosa to wrote, the Road Commissioners Committee for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Again, this is a, um, reappointment. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I know that Mr. Bessie's having trouble with his, um, transmission, not his car transmission.
Yes, I said yes.
Yes, I know you did, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
The, the next-
Oh, that's one. Fine, yes, we can do that, too. Um, I make a motion that we appoint Samantha Nichols to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Ms. Nichols. Again, this is a reappointment. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is done. Um, now, you know that last week we approved the license transfer, um, the liquor license transfer to Town Tavern and Tap. Unfortunately, we missed the paperwork for the entertainment license for that entity, and they didn't have it submitted properly. So I don't think, oh, Mr. Barry is here. Um, Noah, would you please let Mr. Barry, Mr. Barry, would you raise your hand, please? Thank you. And I don't see your attorney, so if you're the only one, that's fine. If, if you have someone with you, would they please raise their hand? I think it's just you. Good evening, Mr. Barry. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
David Barry.
How are you this evening?
Very well, and yourselves?
I think you.
John, John unfortunately couldn't make it.
That's okay. Um, I'm going to accept a motion to grant this, and then I'm going to allow questions. May I have a motion, please, to grant?
I make a motion that we grant a entertainment license to Town Tavern and Tap, thirty-one, thirty-eight Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. From the hours of eleven to one, Monday through Saturday, and ten to twelve A M. on Sundays.
Second. My motion made and seconded to that motion. Mr. Barry, I just have one quick question before we go. Is it thirty-one, thirty-eight? Because I know we've had discussions about what the right address of that is.
Thirty, thirty-one, thirty-eight.
Okay, great, thanks. Do any, um, Mr. Barry, could you repeat what you stated last week, which was why you would like this license, please, and where you tend to have the entertainment?
Absolutely. I'm not sure if you have the updated stuff that was sent over in reference to the floor plan of where we identified in the inside and outside.
Yes, sir, we do.
Obviously, we're not intending to do entertainment for the allotted time that we were asking there from the timeframe of opening to closing. We're just leaving it at that, you know, requesting like we do with all of our other entities that we've done in the past, um, to have that as an option, so we don't have to come to the board if we had a private event of some, some sort, looking for entertainment. But we're looking for, we are going to be a restaurant firsthand, where a restaurant at firsthand, so with the music that we're intending to do is either a single or duo acoustic entertainment background music in the lounge area or on the deck area, uh, sometime between the hours of maybe six to nine max, maybe seven to ten on certain days. And then we're also, um, we're very, very, we do a really beautiful brunch at both of our other locations, both in Thattaborough and in Pembroke. And we were looking on possibly, potentially, not when we opened immediately, but doing a beautiful brunch there with like, um, again, acoustic, kind of, uh, we do some Sinatra, Sinatra singer that comes in. We do a really nice brunch on Sunday. So that's why we were looking for it, to have it in the morning on Sunday as well.
Thank you. This sounds terrible, again, back talk, back echoing. So if you're not speaking, could you please turn your audio off? Do any of you have any questions of Mr. Barry? Please raise your hand. Ms. Wertz?
Now I have to unmute me again. Um, Mr. Barry, um, it's good to talk with you. Again, it's hard to talk to your name and not your face. Um, I have- pardon me?
I don't know why it's not showing this time.
Oh, well, um, you have some concern, and I don't think that you will ever do anything other than what you're stating, but especially with, um, entertainment outside. We have other sites, other, um, facilities where there is a lot of problem with outside entertainment and it going on to all hours of the night. So, um, I do know that there's been discussions about limiting outside entertainment to no later than eleven at night. Um, and so I just have a concern about if we set a certain benchmark or a, um, process with you, we then have to look at it through the rest of the town.
Absolutely, and I don't disagree. Uh, if you've ever visited our Pembroke location, it's obviously surrounded by three sixty water, and that was a big concern of the Pembroke, uh, Select Board as well. And I'm sure if you ever reached out to any of the Select Board, they would understand and, and, and kind of let you know the good due diligence that we have done when we do entertainment on a, our outside. Um, we have, you know, like I said, at max, in the years of operation of Town Tavern, I think the latest we've ever played is probably ten P M. latest, but it usually runs to that six to nine timeframe. I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not looking for a late-night craziness, you know, eleven o'clock bands, that type of thing. I just, I was keeping the, uh, the options open for the entertainment license for any-
And so I have-
Can I just make, let me just jump in here. Mr. Barry, have there ever been any complaints about noise on either of your two locations?
No.
Thank you.
So again, I have no problem with the hours you're asking for inside. Um, but if it would be comfortable for you, I'd like to see outside, um, to have the limit at eleven o'clock at night, so to, no later than eleven, so that we have some consistency across what we do in the town. So for what it's worth, that's my thought.
Mr. Bessie?
Uh, yeah, my, my only thing is, um, do we have the, do we have the ability in, in granting the license for entertainment? Do we have the ability to limit the outside time? Um, even though the license would be granted from eleven to one, could we put somewhere in there that it stipulated that it couldn't be passed a certain time on the outside of the premises? Is that something we can do? Or is it just a blanket, it's eleven to one, and they can kind of do what they want? Because I understand where, uh, Tricia's coming from, and if we're going to start moving in a right direction to cure some of these potential problems that we have at other establishments, is there a way for us to do that, to say that we're starting a new benchmark, or is it not allowable? I mean, maybe that's a, uh-
I'm going to ask Mr. Bowen to answer that question, but before he answers that question, Mr. Barry, could you please explain if there are any residential areas of surrounding your location at thirty-one, thirty-eight Cranberry Highway?
Uh, just the properties that are on the backside. I don't know the street names. Aztec, I believe it is. That's the only, uh, only residential properties that I know of.
And, um, one more question, sir. How is your speaker or your karaoke, you know, whatever those things are called that make the noise? Where are they going to be aimed? Are they going to be aimed at the highway? Are they going to be aimed toward Aztec?
Towards Route Six.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen, could you answer Mr. Um, Bessie's concerns, please?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Question? Yeah.
To, uh, Selectman Bessie's, uh, question, uh, Ron, absolutely. You can, uh, draw distinctions between different areas of the business, especially where the, the potential sound impact would differ, you know, inside versus outside and, and so on. So I believe the type of restriction that you're suggesting, uh, is allowable. And, uh, moreover, I, I kind of gather from the applicant that he might be agreeable to accepting that type of distinction.
Mr. Barry, would you be agreeable to accepting that distinction?
At eleven P M. for outside, is that what your reference was?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. I'm, like I said, I'm not looking to run a nightclub.
So that would be, um, that would be both on your weekday license as well as your Sunday license. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, eleven P M. Anything inside would be the one that we, the, whatever the lengthy time that we're saying. If we're outside and eleven P M. was the end time, absolutely. I don't see a problem with that at all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from any of the board members? Okay, I'm going to restate the motion then. I move to grant Town Tavern and Tap, thirty-one, thirty-eight Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. O two five three eight, an entertainment license from the hours of eleven A M. to one A M. Monday through Saturday in the indoor portion of the building, noting that the outdoor portion of the building will be limited to eleven o'clock P M. And further, that we grant a uh, Sunday entertainment license from eleven A M. to eleven P M. on Sundays with the same stipulation. Is there-
Okay.
Excellent. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven, you're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Barry, um, obviously, when you have your C O., we'd be happy to give you all of your paperwork. And thank you very much for choosing to do business in Wareham. We appreciate it.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it, and I look forward to seeing all of you.
Thanks very much. And no macaroni with lobster in it.
Have a great, have a great day.
You as well. Thanks so much.
Bye-bye.
May I have a motion? Is there anybody here representing the Pan Mass Challenge? Please raise your hand. I don't think there is. Okay, we get asked this every year. Ms. Wertz, would you make a motion, and then we can, um, explain what it is?
I make a motion that we vote to grant permission for Pan Mass Challenge to use the Deacon School on August fifth, two thousand and twenty-three for race staging.
There's second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All of the, um, applicable people to sign off, including the Police Department, have signed off on this application. We do this every year. The Pan Mass Challenge goes through Wareham, and they use this location as a water and rest stop. Any further discussion on the motion?
Um, I'm sure, but, uh, an apology for, um, my earlier technical difficulties. I believe this year, the, it, the stop's going to be manned by the Wareham Police Association. So we appreciate all your help with this.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to grant? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is done. Next, discussion and possible vote on the letter of support. You've got a copy of the letter of support, Mr. Um, Sullivan, do you choose to speak to this application for the reducing of the nitrogen load, loading in Little Harbor, sir?
Uh, this is, I believe, it's an application, the grant application that was done before. And, uh, I appreciate Buzzards Bay Coalition. They reached out to us, working with us on this, and, uh, see if we can hopefully get it this time.
Excellent. May I have a motion to grant, please? Or to, yeah, a motion to write the letter of support?
I make a motion to, I make a motion, we vote to write the letter of support for grant application for reducing nitrogen loading in Little Harbor under the Buzzards Bay Con- for reducing nitrogen loading in Little Harbor under the Buzzards Bay Comprehensive Conservation and Management Plan Support Grant Program Round Two.
There's a second to that motion. Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, Mr. Sullivan, are we going to have any costs involved with this particular grant? Do we have any matching funds or any? Or any expenses after they get started with this?
So if you remember, this is, we have to redo the septic at the site already. We're trying to set our costs by getting this grant and loop in others as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, this is more, I, it is, moved. There's a bug flying around. Um, next, discussion impossible vote to reduce the number of members on the recycling committee from nine to seven. This is at the request of the Chair of the Committee who has also talked with the committee members. The committee only has four members. And therefore they can't have a meeting because when you have nine on your committee, even though five of them don't exist, you can't have a meeting. So, um, the, the committee, actually, the recycling committee actually decided that they would prefer to have seven as their number of members. Um, and they would have some associate members as well. So I would accept a motion to reduce the number of members on the recycling committee from nine to seven with two associates. Is there a second to that motion, please?
Second.
Uh, go for a discussion, Mr. Slaven.
Uh, most committees today are having problems maintaining any kind of uh numbers. Uh, if they only have four that are active, I think the intelligent thing to do is bite the bullet and bring it down to five. It makes it a lot easier for them because if they only have four that are active and they have to have seven, it's real easy for them not to have one at any time because they can't meet. If you have it at five, the chance to have three out of the four is a lot easier.
It's their request to go to seven, sir. I already have the discussion with Ms. Cobb, who's the chair.
She understands, but I understand, but uh it's part of our job to do things the the correct way. And when we see an issue to fix it once and fix it right, uh, I'm not in favor of going to seven. I'm in favor of going to five.
Okay. Any other discussion from any of the members of my board? Ms. Wertz?
If we go to five, I think we should also establish that there needs to be two, so at least two associates. That gives that board the seven number that they're looking for and it's got people in training.
And it also allows them to move up to vote if they need to.
Right.
I think. All right, um. Ms. Wertz, would you like to restate your motion, please?
Okay, I make them.
I don't know. Did I make a motion? I don't remember.
You did.
I think it was you.
Yeah. I will, I will rescind my motion.
All right, I make a motion that we vote to reduce the number of members on the recycling committee from nine to five with an additional two associate members.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to reduce the number to five with two associates. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, I think you're doing, yeah, I think you're doing the wise thing. Um, my only concern is, do you wanna more conversation with the the chairperson of the recycling committee before taking this action?
I think if sh- if they disagree, they're they're planning on meeting this week. So they could bring it back to us on the first, which would be the next regular meeting that we would have. I think that's a good suggestion and I certainly will have the conversation with Ms. Cobb. Any for, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Slaven?
Hey, Derek, I have a new name. Uh, the reason I'm doing this is we've had problems with the Veterans Council and several other groups who've had anywhere from nine to eleven members. And we recently basically cut them all back to five, again, because it's very hard to get volunteers to show up all the time. And uh we need to be, um, I think aggressive in doing what's best. And and my comment has always been do it once and do it right.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to reduce to five with two associates? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick may have stepped away for a moment. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is four zero zero. And then next I will accept a motion to close the hearing on the um Cranberry Highway D B A Wareham Truck. Oh, Mr. Chadwick, choose to vote on the um rejection, um, the recycling committee to five members with two associates?
Yes, it's fine.
Thank you. Then the mode is, the vote is five zeros there. Ms. Wertz, please?
Okay, I make a motion to close the hearing for the application from thirty eighty-two Cranberry Highway D B A Wareham Truck and Equipment for a class two license in accordance with the provisions of chapter one forty in the Mass Journal Law.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to close the hearing. Remember, we held this open to make sure that he was able to remove vehicles from another property that this property where he was improperly storing vehicles, unregistered vehicles. Any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is closed. And next, Ms. Wertz may have a motion on the um, second half of fiscal year twenty-three curbside commitment.
So I make a motion that we um accept the second half of F Y twenty-three curbside commitment for one million three hundred and twenty-two thousand seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded for one million three hundred twenty-two thousand seventy-five dollars to curbside commitment for the second half of fiscal twenty-three. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Um, is there anyone of my members who would like to reopen the discussion on any of the just, any of the five articles for the July special meeting, which will be held on Monday?
You skipped an item.
Oh, yeah. Let me just do that one. Anybody want to talk about that? Nope, okay. Um, we, I would like to have a reorganization of this board. Ms. Wertz has been a clerk for over a year. Um, and she and I have talked about creating the bench um, so that other people can learn the different jobs that that are necessary to have a committee function correctly. So I will accept a motion for chair and then I'll accept a motion for clerk.
Make a motion for truth, what's at the chair?
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. You have a motion for clerk, please?
I make a motion that we appoint Jared Chadwick as clerk.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to appoint Mr. Chadwick as clerk. Mr. Chadwick, do you accept?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and I know that Ms. Wertz has discussed with you how she would help you fulfill that role.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, just so the public understands, normally I would have probably been chair at least one or two more times in the last four or five years. Uh, basically put a lot of effort to be involved with different organizations outside of the town to help the town with grants and different ways of getting things done. I just want to make it official so everybody understands that I will not be rerunning for Selectmen uh this coming May.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to appoint Mr. Chadwick as clerk? Hearing none, I will go for a wall call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Any further discussion? I would like to suggest that we give Ms. Wertz an honorary um title based on the fact that she stepped onto the battlefield with no training. Um, and I would suggest something like vice chair. Um, and I'd leave it up to you gentlemen and Ms. Wertz to think, tell me what you think of that suggestion?
It's fine. We just need to have some uh description of what the job actually is. We can do that in another meeting.
So, okay, is there a second to my suggestion or do you want to wait until?
I just second.
Okay, motion made in seconded to create that position and understand that there'll be a job description or there is a job description for chair. There is one for clerk, so we can work on that. Any further discussion on that motion? Um, then I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, five zero little. Thanks very much. I want to say thank you, Ms. Wertz. You have done a very um respectable job in a tough, tough, tough situation. Um, the reassignment of liaisons. The liaison, the function of liaison is something I think that has been misunderstood by a whole lot of people. Doesn't mean that you go to every meeting. It means that you are the person that that committee can go to when you have a question or a problem or an issue or just want to give yourself some, some um advertising. And Ms. Wertz has this evening discussed what the events at the library are. And from time to time, uh, all of you have reported on that. So we don't have the list of liaisons in front of us this evening, but is there anyone who knows that they'd like to not be the liaison to something anymore? That was easy. Okay, so I'll get you that, that list. Um, we may want to have people step into some of the roles that Mr. Slaven is currently serving. He's just made a statement about not being around after May. And again, building the bench is important, so. Um, we'll go further than Mr. Sullivan. Town administrators report, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Um, so a couple of things here. First, the Mass Trails Grant for the bike path, that was before us, uh, I think a few weeks ago, I just want to let everybody know I did sign off and authorize that. And it was a split board and sort of left up to me if not, but uh I felt we had the opportunity, so I moved forward with that grant. And I've uh managed to take off half my bosses, so that's a good thing. Uh.
It was only two thirds of, or two fifths of you bosses.
Um, at least at that meeting. Uh, we're almost done with uh the, the piping clover uh season, the about August one, I believe we will no longer require spotters to, to do any of the uh, any of the, what do you call it, the tractor sweeping out along the beaches? So, uh, they, I don't think people understand that actually isn't just one person out there within the uh within the surf rake. It's actually, we actually have to have spotters out there as well, which are our trained staff. Otherwise, we have to hire from a different agency to do that. Uh, an interesting one too, which I, I, I guess I didn't realize that, but June uh, June and Swift's Beach and Swift's Neck. We are, we were, you're not allowed to use the surf rake during the, uh, during that time because of the horseshoe crab specifically in that area, so. Um, it's interesting, some of the, some of the things we, we come across and sort of some of the handicaps that uh that our staff have to work with um for their jobs. Another thing, I was talking to one of the Serp Ed communities, um, I think Mr. Slaven has talked to him multiple times. And they just uh signed their new trash uh curbside pickup. And I was looking at it just to see how we compare. And uh they're at three hundred and eighty dollars now. Okay, we're at three sixty-five, so in the same wheelhouse. Um, same recycling size container, the ninety-six, but what was interesting to see was their barrel. Um, whereas we have the uh sixty-four gallon, they are doing a thirty-two gallon container for their trash. So half the size of what we have. So, um, so.
Barely make it with two.
Yeah, so, um, it was good to see. And apparently, instead of uh being able to get other containers, you have to buy bags. Uh, and then you leave them on the ground, which can be, which can be an issue, so. Uh, I was happy to see that I think we're, we're still providing a very good service for the cost to what's going on in other communities. And uh it's my goal to keep that going. Um, so, and then the other item is, I know that the uh the, these, I don't know if it's come before you yet, but we started the process for the Cape Verdean Festival. Uh, Public Safety Staff, Minnesota Maintenance, all of them have been, have been meeting on it. We're anticipating a high turnout. It's been a few years since it's been back to uh Onset Center, Onset Proper, if you will, and the, the band shelf, so uh looking forward to a, to a good turnout and uh everybody having a safe, happy and good time. So.
Can I just ask a question about that? The heat this year has been dreadful. And if we expect five to ten thousand people and it's a day like we've been having, we're gonna have some medical emergencies, in my opinion. Are we addressing that, sir?
Yeah, we actually, those, that happens every year. Uh, every year we've had it. We have people passing out from the heat and such and because it's multi, it's a multi-generational attendance too. So that can be a, um, so I know that they're, they're looking into some of the cooling stations, but it's always been part of our EMS and uh public safety response as well.
Excellent, thanks. Mr. Chadwick, do you want to chime in on that?
Do we plan on, I, I know it's part of our EMS, do we plan on having a uh ambulance on standby detail down there for?
Yeah, they usually do have an ambulance detail down there.
Do you think one is sufficient enough for that size crowd?
It's gonna be, yeah, I think they've had two in the past, but as you know, when uh depends on what's happening in around the uh the town, so. Because we've got the three ambulance, we'll usually try and run two. They also pull in response teams and uh details from all their communities as well.
Okay, that was my next question. If we've thought about looking at ambulances for uh details from other towns.
Yeah, I have not. Um, I know the joint meeting, they were looking at plan next week. I haven't been a part of it yet, but I can surely give you more details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Sullivan?
That is all, thank you.
Okay, two minute morning. Each of you have two minutes for your liaison initiative or board comments. Mr. Slaven, two minutes.
I'm done.
Done. Mr. Bessie, two minutes.
Uh, I'm just gonna count to sixty. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Your turn.
I'm good.
Ms. Wertz, your turn.
She is muted. She's good because she's muted.
Yep, there we go. Keep going.
St. PC Fincom Planning and um I know there's another one. H- Historic Commission. That's what I want.
Huh?
Huh?
Well, she's talking about liaison.
Oh.
So what did you want me to talk about? I thought you wanted.
We only have two minutes, so do you have anything that needs to, because I've been told by at least one of my members that eight o'clock is is the princess time.
I'm good. The princess here is quiet tonight.
Excellent. So my, Ms. Wertz, I will accept a motion on some minutes, please?
Okay, I make a motion that we accept. I had the, I just want to make sure. Let me look at, where's my agenda? I make a motion that we approve and accept the meetings, the minute, meeting minutes for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve those minutes. Is there any further discuss? Mr. Slaven?
Uh, I probably missed something. Uh, we're not going to discuss the articles of July special meeting.
I asked if anybody wanted to revisit them and nobody answered the question.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, make sure.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion on the motion to accept those minutes? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Tell if, yes, they are approved and accepted. And next, Ms. Wertz?
I make a motion that we approve the ex- executive session meeting minutes for April eleventh, twenty twenty-three and July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
And hold.
And hold.
And hold, accept and hold.
Accept and hold.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is any further discussion on the motion to accept and hold? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Is there any other business to come before this astute board, Mr. Slaven?
Just a very quick comment. Uh, anybody that has to have any vascular heart problems, whatever else at the hospital, I highly recommend shouting hospital, I had a procedure uh, this past Monday and uh, it it not only went smoothly, they just keep getting better and better. I'm very happy with the care that I've been getting over the last five years there. With that, a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded, motion made and seconded to adjourn. It's not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote. I know what it's gonna be, Mr. Slaven?
Yeah, I'm adjourned.
Mr. Bessie?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Come on, Jared.
Mr. Chadwick? Yeah, we can't hear you. Thank goodness you're muted.
No. Have a good night.
Night Wareham. Thank you very much. We are adjourned. It is seven fifty one.
Good night, everyone.
Night Wareham.